And I'm sorry, Matt and Erin, right?
I'm missing Dan.
And Dan.
All right, it says it's live, we'll see. Connie, did you put up that new link?
Yes.
Okay, so if there is no objection, then we will call this meeting to order. I'm going on two screens here today. So however you'd like to do that, if you would please rise, I'm gonna rise here and we will start with the pledge. You may not see me. I'll hold that there. Thank you. And before I continue, do we have anybody else on? Okay, they're not on board yet.
Matt House.
We do have several, unfortunately, with the moment of silence. So if we could pause for the moment of silence for the following. Sarah Rozinski, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Robert T. Elitzhauser Jr., a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Michelle A. Greenia, attended school in the North Syracuse Central School District. Michael Oliver, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thomas Hamel, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Irene Young, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Sandy Cavalo, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District. Russell Castiller, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Michael E. White, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. And we'll starting, oh, thank you for joining us, Lisa. We're gonna start with your presentation on social and emotional learning. We've been looking forward to this, so I'm glad you could join us via Zoom.
Well, I'm very happy to be here and let me just take a moment to share the PowerPoint with you.
Lisa, before you get started, I'd like to say, I'd like to say Lisa has been doing a phenomenal job since early in the school year. And as you've seen, we've done a lot of presentations at the junior high, more than said, we've had other districts come to us. What I wanted Lisa to focus on more recently is what have we been doing since this crisis to support our students with social emotional learning and where are we headed with some of those areas? So I will turn things over to Lisa at this time.
Thank you for framing that. Let me see if I can share this.
Okay, very good.
Um, so the name of this is staying socially connected while physically distancing. And I think one of the things that, two things I want to say to frame this. One is that I think our staff has been doing a phenomenal job to really support, connect with, and work exceedingly hard to move from a physical school to an online school setting in a very short period of time. And increasingly, they are reaching out, evidenced by the Bear Road Parade, the Smith Parade. There's a beautiful video that Dan shared with me from the junior high. And I think we are learning as a community how very valuable our homeschool connection is. So we are in the midst of adjusting to this new normal and it's counterintuitive because at a moment of crisis, when we generally would instinctively come together, we're being asked to stay apart. And I think it is not an understatement to say that this aloneness coupled with the actual terrorizing elements of the virus have really caused us to be a traumatic experience for all of us. And I don't use that word lightly, but I do use it intentionally. In order to frame, I only have a few slides for you, but I think this idea of trauma is very important and what it does to our brains. And so I want to show you a very brief video on trauma and its impact on learning. And there'll be a little commercial before we come in, so just be aware of that. And let me know if you can hear.
One of the great challenges in this world is knowing enough about the subject to think you're right.
Hey, welcome back. Today, I really wanted to think about what's the best way to teach teachers about trauma without getting them distracted with all the technical stuff? And what's the most important thing for them to understand and learn? And I thought that the best way to do it might be to just make a difference between a learning brain versus a brain in survival. And so we'll just call it learning brain versus survival brain. And this is the difference. So learning brain is this brain that's open to learning new information and it's completely okay with ambiguity and grays and vagueness. And it sees the big picture. It like pulls back and is on the balcony, can look over the forest and figure out what's going on. On an emotional level, people in learning brain feel calm, peaceful, maybe a little excited about what they're about to learn, maybe a little playful and having fun too, and definitely curious. And they're not afraid of making mistakes because it's just part of the learning process. And so they're not really thinking about themselves. And they actually feel a little bit of confidence that if they just apply themselves, they might pick up what they're trying to learn. Now, survival brain, on the other hand, is completely different. It's hyper focused on threat. It doesn't like ambiguity. It wants clear, hard facts. It thinks in black and white terms. Doesn't want anything to be gray at all. And then emotionally, you can imagine that survival brain makes people feel panicky, feel like a little obsessive and afraid of getting things wrong. And they don't feel calm and open to learning new things. They just want to get things over with. And people in survival brain also really don't like making mistakes and they are afraid of looking stupid too. So students in survival brain don't want to be picked on. They don't want to raise their hand and ask questions and look stupid. And so these people are also filled with doubt about their own ability to learn stuff. And they're afraid that other people can see how stupid they really are. Now, it's really important to understand how learning brain and survival brain interact because survival brain always trumps learning brain. And it makes sense because survival brain is just trying to save your life. And so if it thinks that there's something dangerous happening, you better pay attention, right? But the tricky thing is that as survival brain stays on longer and longer, it's harder to get out of that. And it's harder to really go into learning brain. And the way I think about it is kind of like the myth of Sisyphus. You know that guy who has to push a rock up a hill and then every day it falls back down and he has to do it over and over again? Well, being in learning brain is like being up on the high parts of that mountain. You can see the expanse of what's going on, but it also takes a lot of work to be up there. And at any second, if you're not paying attention and make putting effort into it, it's so easy to slip back into survival brain again. And that rock that Sisyphus is trying to push up, well, that's kind of like stress. And the more stressed you feel, the heavier and bigger that rock gets and it just pushes you back into survival brain quicker. Now, the kicker is that for traumatized people, stress is a really rigid and intense thing. And so with trauma, any little stress makes that rock grow way bigger than it normally would. And because people with trauma misperceive ambiguous situations as threatening and stressful, that rock just stays big all the time. Now, the good news is that the more you control stress, well, the easier it is to be in learning brain, right? Because that rock is a lot smaller. And what I really want to highlight for teachers is that the best way to keep students in learning brain goes back to why I spent so much time talking about attachment. Students best learn when they feel like they're safe and supported by the adults around them. So it's kind of like a baby elephant. You know how like on those nature shows, the baby elephant is like playing with leaves or exploring a tree or something like that and having a lot of fun? And the only reason why they can do that is because there's a whole group of mama elephants around that baby, protecting it and looking out for danger. So a kid with trauma or who's stuck in survival brain, it's kind of like that baby elephant who doesn't have protective adults around them. They can't play and learn because they're way too focused looking out for threat and danger. So this is why I really believe that the most important thing that schools need to focus on, way more important than any kind of techniques or curricula, is really whether or not they are creating that environment where students feel like they're surrounded by these big mama elephants who are gonna protect them and watch out for them and make them safe. And when students have that, I bet you it unlocks their curiosity, their eagerness to learn and play as a way to learn. So I hope that's helpful. Let me know if you have any questions in the comments below. Thanks.
So, so if I were here on a typical night, I would talk with you a little bit about what we're seeing in students on a regular basis and the levels of trauma, anxiety, depression that we're seeing among our students. At this moment, all of those conditions still exist with the overlay of COVID-19. And so we can anticipate when we return to physical school that students will be working through a lot of what they have experienced throughout this period. So I think the trauma is a really important thing to keep in your brain as we talk about kinds of things that our students will need. So three purposes for this brief presentation. What is needed now, short term? What has been put in place to respond to those needs? And what needs to be built moving forward to meet the social emotional learning and mental health needs of our students? What is needed right now, this idea of connection? In that video, they talk about the mama elephants and they talk about this safe and supportive environment, also known as a trauma sensitive or a trauma informed environment. That connection with trusted adults is the number one factor in creating resilience among students. We're gonna come back and talk about that in a minute. Also, we need to make sure that we have mental health support. And as you know, there is a tremendous amount of stigma that is associated with mental health and mental health support. But at this moment, I would say that all of us, meaning students, families and our staff, are in need of some support. We've never been through this. This is an unprecedented moment in our history. And those among us, our students among us who are the most vulnerable, need that support. And lastly, we need to focus on the development of what are considered core social emotional learning competencies. This visual is a graphic that is used by CASL, which stands for the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning. They are the flagship organization in our country that focuses on social emotional learning. It's been around for about 25 years. They say there are five key competencies. Self-awareness, what am I feeling? Self-management, how am I gonna deal with what I'm feeling? Responsible decision making, now that I know what I'm feeling and I'm gonna make some choices about how I move through the world. Relationship skills, how am I gonna treat other people? And lastly, social awareness, which really breaks down to empathy as well as an individual's cultural responsiveness. We need to develop those skills to provide that mental health support and that connection right now. So there are certain, several things put in place. We noticed that we've done a lot of work with connection in terms of our points of contact. By that, I mean our teachers, principals, our counselors of all varieties, who have made and continue to make connections with students and their families. They have worked tirelessly to not only meet the counseling requirements in IEPs, but to do well checks in families, to connect with students that they had seen in sessions and groups, and to basically touch base with our students who are most vulnerable. Our building principals are currently gathering data about disengaged students. And I want to say two things about that. It is no small feat at this point to virtually gather information in a cogent way. And so there are several challenges about being off campus. And I think our principals have been heroic, and I'm using that word mindfully, in connecting with students as have teachers. And they're trying to collate all that evidence. We're still in process. And by disengaged, there's two different meanings of that. One is disengaged in the traditional sense, disengaged from the learning, the academics. But there's also extenuating circumstances where there may be some families who are disengaged. Maybe they don't have, maybe they don't have a place to live right now. Maybe they've left the area to live with family elsewhere because they've both lost their jobs or a parent has lost their job. For that, that data is forthcoming. And once that data is in place, there will be some follow-up planning around how best to well check with families and to provide alternative access to schoolwork if it's not been working well right now for some families. Also, in terms of mental health support, counselors, as I said, are continuing to make connections. And our Liberty Resource School-based clinics, we have them in five schools. We're really fortunate to be the largest number in the county outside of Syracuse. And they are still taking referrals and still seeing their clients. And they are working with a telehealth model that is HIPAA compliant. And they, every session they enact with their students, they have their parents give a virtual permission. So that's built into the process for everyone's safety. Also, in terms of mental health support, we've made a lot of resources available for staff and families. And I'll show you those in a minute. As well as our counselors have come up with three new things started last week. Wellness Wednesdays, which is a fun uplifting way to engage students and families in some fun, lighthearted mental wellness. This week's focus is having a dance party at home, as well as some posts on Facebook and Instagram on this, on the district site. We also have, and if you've not visited it, please take a look because it's pretty remarkable, our offsite educational resources. You can access this by going to our homepage. And if we scroll down, and I would encourage you to check out the resources, it's pretty incredible. We have a wellness resource page. And on it, you'll see right up top is a direct link to connection information for all of our school counselors, social workers, psychologists, et cetera. So families and students can connect with counselors, as well as the New York State Emotional Support Line. And then we've broken resources into three categories. Help and support, talking with your child about COVID-19 and self-care. And I'll just briefly show you, the help and support has lots of community resources. If you've not been to 211, that's incredible. Anything and everything you can imagine is here. We've included a large number of resources around suicide prevention. And we've done an extensive amount of work, more to do on suicide prevention across our district. So those are some of the things that are in place for connection and mental support, and then skill development. We are trying in a non-burdensome way. And when I say we, it is Amy McMahon, who is our social and emotional learning coach. Stacy Green, who is, as you may know, a teacher at the junior high, who is also very interested in suicide prevention and social emotional learning, and several counselors subset of the counselors. And we put together some materials that are available for staff. Dave London has a weekly PD page that he started last week. And a staple bullet on that will be mental health resources and SEL. And this will work on two fronts. One is to help educators in sustaining themselves because you cannot pour from an empty cup. And the other is how they may integrate some of the mental health and SEL content into their lessons. Lastly, accap counselors, who as you may know are funded partially by the state through BOSI, teach SEL skills. And they work grades K six in our district. And they are working on their own to create videos that classroom teachers can use. And they're also in concert with classroom teachers to develop lessons and learning experiences for our students. This week, we put out on Dave London's page, a large number, I think four or five. We didn't want to overwhelm the people trying to really curate things, ideas that teachers can integrate in their classroom for this week. So what will be done? Fortunately, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We are 15 years outside of Katrina. And I've been doing a lot of research on the aftermath. Many of those students were out of school for a year to a year and a half. And I, when I say out of school, I mean out of school. There was no online because as you know, it was a weather disaster. One of the key components to long-term success for students is the idea of building resilience. And one of the things, as we talked about earlier, is this idea of trauma informed or trauma sensitive school. I have a really short video, which gives you an idea about what it is we want to build. So let me show that to you now.
What does it mean to to make the world a better place?
Nice. So those are those big questions we're focusing on. For me, being trauma informed has so much to do with mindset. Accepting that different people come into a school setting with incredibly varied life experiences. Some of those life experiences may be traumatic. And the way in which that plays out in my particular classroom could look a number of ways. And by me having that lens, it makes it less about are they doing the right thing or the wrong thing? And more about where is that behavior coming from? Why is that happening?
Adverse childhood experiences like poverty, neglect, exposure to violence can bring about overwhelming stress, which can cause negative effects on the learning brain and on behavior. If children have the experience of adversity, they will have uneven development of these foundational skills like self-regulation and executive function or relationship skills. These are the children who are at risk to fall further and further behind. But the good news is that there is a powerful antidote to stress. And that is the effect of the human relationship and the process of trust. Schools are an ideal place to produce many different kinds of relationships that are capable of buffering stress. Schools themselves can be healing places. If you're fearful, if you're anxious, if you're distracted about something that's happened to you, you literally can't learn. Your brain shuts down. So it's essential to give kids social and emotional tools that allow students to recover from the challenges that they have experienced. Take actual classroom time to work on the building blocks of how to perceive your emotions, how to talk about them, how to get along with other people, how to take a moment and become calm when you need to, how to express your needs so that others can meet them. When we start to understand what it takes to be responsive to the effects of trauma, we need to think about the environment, about individual services. And we need to think about the skills and mindsets of kids that won't develop as they should when they're impacted by trauma.
I do a lot of work around self-awareness and being able to name emotions and then make a choice around those.
When I get mad, I take deep breaths and I help make it more calm.
Many of the things that we think about doing for kids who may have experienced trauma are good for everybody. And everyone will encounter some kind of adverse circumstance at some point in their life. And for some children, we're helping them deal with what's already happened in their lives. For others, we're preparing them to deal with the challenges later in their lives.
If you can hear my voice say, we are awesome.
So this, how do we do this when we're not together? This is where some forward planning is most needed. Moving forward, we need to shape infrastructure. What do I mean by that? We have a lot of resources in our system. How do we reallocate those resources in terms of our mental health support, in terms of our health teachers, our PE teachers, to begin to create structures that through which we can build some of this social emotional learning off-campus and then back on-campus? To do this, we need to build a mental wellness COVID-19 task force. And this needs to be created so that we can begin to address some of our needs now in a broader range, our middle-term range. And we have to deal with the ambiguity of not knowing when we're going to go back to school. And that is extremely stressful for students, families and staff. We have started some of the trauma-informed practices work. We had a grant that provided lots of books last year and through this year, specifically reaching and teaching children who are, which is a wonderful practical resource of how to infuse classrooms with these trauma-informed practices. And we need to leverage that with more of our staff. We also need to begin to examine what resources we must provide for parents. Parents are undergoing an unprecedented experience with their kid. Their kids who do a lot of their socializing at school, stronger have that avenue. And they can't even get together to socialize. How do we help parents bridge that gap? And throughout, we need to maintain a flexible mindset. We need to continue to collect data and be informed by it. And we need to be responsive as we move forward. We may have an idea about what we thought was needed. And as we get more data and evidence, we might need to amend what we initially thought. And lastly, when it comes to our staff, we need to train, support and sustain. We are excellent at training people. How we support them and sustain them through this work is going to be integrally important to our successful. In short, plan forward, shape some infrastructure, train, support and sustain. And lastly, in that video, I believe at one point, Dr. Cantor says, "Schools can be healing places." I want to leave you with that thought because as we move forward, I believe we're going to look at this time as life before COVID and life after. And I would submit that something as simple as walking through a school door will be fraught when there is danger in the form of a virus. And we're gonna have to really support our students, our families and our staff through that transition. That's what I have and would open it up for questions.
Well, I don't have any question. A very good presentation. I just, I like the, your last bullet point and bold point, I just can't stress enough how important that is. Not just trained, but the support and sustain. So I'm just gonna repeat that because I feel that strongly about it. Support and sustain. I've seen way too many programs miss out on that piece. And I think that's critical. Really, thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Well, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. And I wish I could come and talk about all the growth that's happened. But, um, but I'm heartened by, we have really committed staff and a really committed community. I know we're gonna get through this stronger. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Lisa, would you, would you be able to provide us updates as you move forward with the plan?
I would be happy to. Thank you.
I mean, I think it's great that we're being proactive about this. So I'd love to get some insight on how you guys are doing.
And I just want to ask, is there gonna be anything to help with this at a BOSI level? Since this isn't just specific to our school district?
What a, you've got, Mary, that's an unbelievably great question. We are really fortunate. So there is an entity called CCSI, which is Coordinated Care Services, Inc. They are a subcontract of the county. We are one of several districts who has been working with them. Liverpool is working with them, ESM, Beville, Salve. And we are so fortunate because they have afforded us lots of training and support. And we, we, interestingly enough, we just had an online meeting last week and are starting to share best practices. And I think this is going, we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel. It's too big a job. And this is across the county and all of us. And I don't need to tell you, under budget constraints, the more that we can work as a collaborative entity and share that the learnings that we've done and the structures that we create, that's such a brilliant question because, because we can't do this alone.
Exactly. Thank you. And very interesting too about the learning brain and the survival brain. I never thought of it that way.
There's a lot of perfectionism, high achieving kids especially have this. Kids in poverty and a lot of trauma have this. So, and, and several of the county- Kids in poverty and a lot of trauma have this. So and and um several of the counties begged me to make this point. So other than um train, support, sustain, I want to leave you with that this will, this trauma will impact all of us. Some of us are really resilient and will be able to just step on forward. And for others of us, this will show up with headaches, with stomach aches, with loss of appetite, or overeating, or over online shopping. That that there's no free lunch here. We're all in this together and it's impacting all of us. So thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, our uh on the agenda, our next presentation is our budget update from Mr. Keegan.
Evening, folks.
Good evening.
So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that uh you can see a PowerPoint slideshow. It says budget update. Okay, good. Good. I I felt a need to uh kind of take a walk down memory lane here. Dan and Chris and Jason and I have talked a lot about the budget and and it's uh it's it's a pretty overwhelming process this year, but we thought we'd start with just to talk a little bit, remind everybody that uh when we presented our initial budget on February 24th, which was based on the governor's um initial uh state budget presented by him in January, we started with a $4.7 million deficit. And and there were a lot of pieces. We always talk about what's included in that initial budget. And it pretty much included business as usual with some of the the new things that we had been talking about and also all of our negotiated contractual increases. You know, the full impact of the middle school schedule, as you know, when we implemented that, we had some unbudgeted costs that we incurred in 1920 that we had to reflect in the 2021 budget. Um, and then and then our special education model. And those three items have certainly materially increased the cost of operating our district. But but that's not really the point I want to make with this slide or that we want to make with this slide. The the problem uh is not that North Syracuse spends too much or spends more than other districts. I just want to make the point that we we still spend less than most districts in New York State. And the problem, the foundational problem, no pun intended, is that there's an inequitable distribution of state aid and that continues to haunt us. And until that's corrected, we're going to have uh we're going to have some challenges. And I want to just make the same point I made in an earlier meeting, which is that if we had received the same percentage of foundation aid as our most comparable neighbor, that $4.7 million deficit wouldn't have been there. So I think that's a good place to start is just to remind us where we were with our initial budget. And this slide, which I know you all have seen before, I'm going to just take a moment to point out, here we are. This this is going left to right. As you follow this orange line, uh districts get wealthier. These are kind of our peer group of large districts with wealth ratios between uh point six and and just shy of 1.0. Here we are at point six two five. Well, here's our most comparable neighbor. And they're getting 90% of their foundation aid and we're only getting 82%. That difference is $14.7 million. I I know this slide has probably been uh displayed too often every year we talk about this, but it's but it's an important theme. The North Syracuse Central School District is rated 18th out of 23 districts. We are 633rd in the state in terms of spending. So it, when people, you know, try to make us feel like we're we're spending um inefficiently, I I have to point to this chart and say, the numbers don't don't seem to indicate that. You know, and 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 we're a public entity and we're a large entity. And so there is some inefficiencies in 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 the way we operate. And we're always trying to snuff those out and do a better job of those. But that's not, that's not the economic picture. The economic picture is that North Syracuse doesn't really spend too much money. We were underfunded. And that kind of brings us to to our next phase or we're calling financial status part two. We came to the board again on March 16th. And we indicated, the budget presentation indicated the $3.1 million variance. And I I just want to remind people or, you know, talk a little bit, how did we get there? How did we get to 3.1 from 4.7? That's a pretty big change. And again, all before the whole COVID-19 thing. Well, we did a couple of things. I think, Mary, it might have been you or one of the board members said at the meeting, hey, Don, when are you going to adjust some of these other revenues and and um and true them up, so to speak, like we do every year? And so we went back and we we looked at our year-to-date experience. We looked at our prior year experience. And we increased our pilot revenue. We had gotten our update from Boncheneke King on some of the payment and lieu of tax agreements we had. And there was about a $45,000 increase in that. Uh, we looked at our sales tax revenue and um and we trued that up based on our experience um and our interest income. And between sales tax and interest income, we picked up about $100,000 each. We had historically over the last couple of years been doing better in sales tax and interest income than than we had originally budgeted. Uh, the interest income was due to some new strategies that we've been using with our new treasurer. He got us involved in in some things that the board approved with a policy change. Um, and that helped out. And then we've done a great job. And I say we, we're just, our special ed department working with BOSIs has done an outstanding job in trying to maximize our Medicaid billable services and and making sure that we're billing for those. And so that was probably the biggest adjustment we had on the March 16th budget presentation was was our Medicaid. Those items all totaled about $545,000. That was a good increase in revenues. The other thing we we talked to the board about, and I I know we we talked at one of the meetings and cabinet spent a lot of time on this. And we felt it was necessary to dig deeper into the district's fund balance and reserves. And we, and the reason we did that, although this is one-time money, we really felt like the types of things that we need to do to rationalize our costs or or um hold out long enough until our revenues change. We we just needed time. And so we we agreed, we'd use our general reserve of $1 million and we'd take another $250,000 out of our um out of our fund balance. And so that those two totaled $1,250,000. And actually, as it is with the budget process, every meeting, every time we meet, we fine-tune things. And we had actually added a couple hundred thousand dollars of cost between uh the initial budget presentation and the March 16th presentation. Well, that got us to our our $3.1 million as of uh as of March 16th. Well, then then COVID-19 uh hit the scene and uh and things, the wheels kind of started to come off the bus. Uh, the governor estimated originally, we knew going into the budget process that the state had about a $6 billion deficit. The controller came out uh once COVID-19 hit. He said, "That's going to cause another $4 billion of of uh shortfall in revenue" from what the governor had projected in his mid-January uh state budget. And and then um things continued to get worse for the state as as uh as communities were were asked to social distance and businesses closed and whatnot. And the latest estimate is that the state's going to have as much as a $15 billion deficit. So the state took some, took some actions. Um, and I I have to be honest with you, I was very impressed, I guess, that the state still delivered a basically on-time budget despite all of the things going on. And the state came out with um a thing called a pandemic adjustment. And um that feels a lot like the gap elimination adjustment. That adjustment for us was a reduction of $1,404,000 in aid. Thankfully, uh the federal government also stepped up with a federal cares restoration grant or aid to schools through the state that equaled that exact amount. So fortunately, um the state once again said, "We can't even pay what we promised you." Uh, we'd pay you or that we were planning on paying you. We're going to be short, but we're going to use these federal funds to off- offset that shortfall. The state shared two other things, though, that were concerning. The first was that revenues are so uncertain at this time that we can only commit to you state aid on a quarterly basis. Now, we're going to give you an estimate of what it's going to be for the year, but we reserve the right to come back every quarter and adjust it downward. Uh, there hasn't been a lot of talk about adjusting it upward, but adjusted downward. And then finally, they did tell us that our foundation aid uh would be capped at the current year's level. That's the 1920 level, the year we're in. And so at the end of the day, the final approved budget at the state level was a $907,000 reduction uh from where we were um in our initial budget based on the governor's initial um state budget. And so um we're at a point now where, you know, there was a time when we were hoping we'd get more state aid. We actually got less. And our current deficit is $4 million before we make any cuts. And I I think it's important to to remind you that right now, we're planning on using $4 million of fund balance. And even with that, we've got a $4 million deficit. So even using $4 million of fund balance, we have a $4 million deficit. And and I want to, I want to add that um right now, our fund balance is projected to be as of the end of June, June 30th, 2020, our fund balance is is projected to be about $6.5 million. So we'd be, we'd be planning, we're planning on using about two-thirds of that already. Now, as you guys know about fund balance, in the interest of full disclosure here, there's, there are two major moving pieces I want to, I want to uh put on the table. The first is that whenever we do our budget, um we make assumptions about expenditures. And what I always say is that there are some that we get wrong and and we under-budget. We've seen that in some of our special ed uh services and BOSIs budgets. And there are some that we estimate and we've, we've been conservative. And we've seen that um in in a number of our expenditures uh this year. And so hopefully, there'll be some recovery of the appropriated fund balance just in the normal course of business. The other thing that's happened since we've um closed school as of uh March 17th, we're accumulating some additional fund balance. And I'd estimate that to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we're actually, we've, we've done some initial calculations on that. We, we don't have the final number. And so things, and it, and it, and the reason we don't have the final number is if you think about it, at the time we were preparing this presentation, we had only had about 14 days where kids weren't in school. And um and we, as much as we talk about school being closed, about 80% of our costs were still incurring. That's our our personnel costs and our benefits. But there were areas where we're going to be, we're going to be saving money. Energy costs, substitutes, professional development, overtime. Um, there's, there's a number of areas where we we traditionally spend money, just the curtailing of, you know, I have to tell you, our purchasing officer, Karen Beck, uh has been, has been working hard and frankly questioning every purchase order. We put our spending freeze in place. And so everything is going through a lot of scrutiny. And so there's some money that's not being spent um that that will contribute to our fund balance as well. I also want to just add to that, that some of the money that's not being spent ends up being a timing issue. For example, um there are some cleaning supplies that the MNO folks aren't buying right now, but they're going to need to buy them ultimately when they do their cleaning. And so we've got a little bit of change in the timing of our expenditures. So there's a lot of moving pieces here, but either way, we've got a $4 million deficit that uh we need to wrestle with and we look forward to working with the budget committee over the next two weeks to share with you some of the specific ideas we have. Um, and I'm going to turn it over to Dan now to kind of talk about um next steps. Um, and I I should point out, I had two additional slides here. Uh, I don't know that I need to go through these in detail, uh but this just shows you the 907, the $907,000 uh difference between the executive budget and the approved budget. It also points out in the next slide, um if you see this, that we did in fact get an increase in aid. Most of that increase relates to excess uh public uh aid, that's our special ed aid, due to the servicing of our students, excess BOSIs aid, because we've been spending a lot of money with BOSIs. As you've seen, we've overspent our budget the last several years. A little bit on the transportation aid side. And again, that comes out to about $2 million uh more aid overall. Um, and those are expense-driven aids. Um, and so we're happy to have those. But but truth be told, we've already spent the money to earn those aids. Yeah, go ahead.
Just just one silly question because it's not significant. I was just curious why we lost $880 in foundation aid, which I thought was frozen at the 1920 level.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, because what ends up happening is, and and we do our budget. So the first column in there, that approved budget, that number is uh the number that was in our actual budget last year. And so there always is this weirdness when we finally get our foundation aid. You might notice this from year to year. It's always been off like a couple hundred bucks and and but we locked in, the number that you see here as reported as our budget number was when we got our final state aid runs last year, that was the number they told us we were going to get. We in fact got a little different number. So that's, that's that piece. If you're ready, I'll, I'll pass it off, pass the baton off to Dan to talk a little bit about uh next steps. Tax calculation, I apologize. Uh, this is uh um not changed substantially. I mean, it changed by a couple of uh one-hundredths of a decimal point, but that's, that's, that number hasn't changed. I wanted to include it in here just to remind you of that. So without further ado, Dan.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Um, with this slide, uh talk about road to financial stability. We're identifying some, some areas that we can probably look to uh make sure there's some efficiencies. And in doing that, I think the last time we were in this problem, it was 2008, 2009. And I think there were just full-scale cuts across the board. And I'm not sure the whys were, were, were thought about, which is, we, we needed to make lots of cuts. So what do we value? And I know you saw a presentation earlier with about with Lisa and the social emotional needs of our students and our families and our staff um is huge. So that's something that I'm just keeping in the back as we're continuing to prepare this budget. But we recognize some short-term areas and we're looking at the secondary levels and looking at um are there areas where there's some inefficiencies as far as our staffing? We're also looking at elementary and middle school to identify um just whether it be ratios and things for for staffing as well. Also looking instructional and operational directors to review their budgets to identify opportunities for savings. One of the things that uh we want to make sure that you you hear from us, our goal is to try to adopt a budget by the April 20th, unless it's delayed, and that could happen. If things are pushed off and delayed, we uh we may be able to garner some more time. But uh right now, we have two meetings set up for the budget subcommittee. That will be on uh Thursday uh this week and Thursday of the following week. But these medium-term um areas are areas that are not something that uh can always happen overnight, but they do have to be looked at. So you see student teacher ratios, professional development, um the current special education model. What are we doing with our IT support and delivery? I mentioned scheduling inefficiencies, uh scheduling efficiencies that we should look at and any non-instructional operations and personnel. So all of those areas, we're going to have to go through with a fine-tooth comb to help make up the difference of the several million-dollar deficit at this time. The long-term, the long-term are 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 long-term. Those are not something that we can look at at this time because there takes a lot to go into those long-term areas. But uh again, if if the federal government and the state can look at the equitable distribution, but the state's going to be in a, in a hard place maybe for several years to come. So I'm not looking at that anytime in the near future. So those are some of the areas that uh we're taking a look at. We are meeting um with uh some of our union leaders uh tomorrow, some of our directors tomorrow, some of our um principals tomorrow um to start the process before we get into the the budget subcommittee, just to make sure we're, we're looking at all areas. Uh, again, this is time where every district is looking at something in order to try to make up the the difference in the gap. Any questions? Any questions? So, Don, I think with no questions, we'll, we'll get back to it and we'll, we'll be giving you our next update from the Budget Subcommittee, which is meeting this Thursday.
Mike, can you unmute? Any questions or comments for anybody? Sorry, I was muted there.
Good.
Okay. No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Don. Thank you very much. With the board's permission, I guess, number three, we will skip comments from the audience. And we have Board of Education Committee reports. I'd like to start with Mary, I believe she has a meeting scheduled for policy this, next week.
Yeah, we do, we have a meeting scheduled. I believe it's Tuesday, the 14th at 5:00. And we'll be holding the meeting via Zoom, same as tonight.
Okay, thank you. Bob, you had some, something to report, I did see your email, yes, sir?
I am going to cancel the April 15th Legislative Committee and will move into May.
Okay, thank you very much. Bob, would you be okay if you'd go right to your BOSI's report?
And I have nothing to report other than the written report that I gave. If any board members have questions, I would answer them. Other than that, my report was given through an email.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I will go right to Superintendent Bowles' comments.
Thank you. First thing I'd like to say is I am really proud of our teachers, administrators, our directors, our food service, our, our drivers. Everywhere I go, people are stepping up like there's no tomorrow. And I'm hearing it in the community as well. I happen to be online early morning to, to get some supplies from the Home Depot and I'm listening to some, some people talk and they're talking about their children in class and the things that our teachers are doing to, to connect with students. And I, I finally kind of identified myself and I thanked them. And they just said that their staff are going out of their way, and people are going out of their way to, to meet the needs of students and families. So I wanted to preface and let the board know, that's what I continue to hear when I was able to get out in the community. I, I won't be able to do that now. But I do want you to know, there are other things that are special for buildings and for families. Bear Road had their parade, Smith Road had a parade to go around neighborhoods. And if you just saw, we just recently, before the meeting started, there is a video that the junior high made to connect with their students and families. I would recommend highly at the end of this meeting that you look at that video. Connie has sent it to all of you. It is out, it is very well done. I picked the four meal sites this morning and people are, are showing up and families are getting fed and it's, it's going well and it's a little bit easier when the weather is warmer. But we will hit a cold spell a little bit more this afternoon. And we keep looking at ways we can meet the needs of families or run our operation a little bit differently. So Don, myself and Wendy Swift had a conversation about that this morning. The only other thing I can, can talk about is what Lisa talked about. About an hour and a half ago, I did have a call from a father and I called him back and he just mentioned that there is a high amount of stress. Child is very stressed. And when, when the announcement came by the governor that we were going to be out of school until April 29th, what that did in some students, that triggered that they are not going to see their favorite teacher, their friends back in the classroom, that whole community feeling. And that was a little overwhelming and this father was asking for support. And within 10 minutes, I was on the phone with the principal who connected with the counselor, who connected with the family, they're going to meet several times through Zoom to connect with the child. And those are the things that are happening like that, that our, our, our organization is looking to make where we're meeting the needs of families. So I felt the need to make sure that you heard that, but we have to do that. And those are the ones we know about and principals and our counselors are trying to make sure they're getting information from families, how can we help you? Because the stress level of families is off the charts and we want to make sure we're meeting people's needs. My, that's my follow-up.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the board or comments on, comments? Somebody want to grab that phone and I will move on to routine action items. We have the minutes, I'd like, if I could get a motion, and we're going to do, talk to Connie and, and we're going to do everything as a roll call vote, just to make sure this gets in the record appropriately. So I, I would still do a grouping of some items. So if I could get a motion to put the minutes before us, motion from Mary, seconded from Matt. Any question on those minutes? Seeing none, okay. All in favor, go ahead, Connie.
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Mike Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matt Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay. Is that carried unanimously then, Connie?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going B and C if I get a motion to do that, to put B and C together. Motion from Mike, seconded by Terry. B is the report on the, just looking here quickly, the preschool. I'm sorry, the Committee on Special Education on Placement and Classification of Students. And also along with that, C is the placement of the preschool students with disability from the preschool CSC. So if there are no questions, we could do the roll call on that, thank you.
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Mike Marizio. Bob Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matt Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, that would be carried unanimously. If I get a motion for the consideration of contract awards, to put that before us, please. Motion from George, seconded from Mark. That is before us, that has to do with the various roofing projects we have going on already, as well as the Bear Road project. I thought, Don, if it's okay, if you could comment on that?
Sure. I have to tell you, with the world going through what it was going through, as we sat opening those bids, there was a fair amount of stress, just wondering, was this going to be the next shoe to drop? That we're going to have another project that didn't come in within our budget? But we couldn't be happier. The feedback on these four contractors that you're going to award bids to has been really good. The total of the bids, each of the contractors is very well-respected. The total of the bids is within our budget and allows us to do some of the alternate work that I, I think would have been a little embarrassing had we not done it. I use, I use my, my poster child for that is the bathrooms at Bear Road. It would have really been embarrassing to renovate a building and then open the bathroom door and walk into 1950, whatever. So it, it, I, I couldn't be happier, we're really excited about starting the project. And I, I, I want to apologize for some of the convoluted language. Our attorney did a great job, Harris Lindenfeld went through and really questioned whether each of these contractors, not only the Bear Road contractors, but our roof contractors, the people that are going to build the playground over at Main Street, whether these were considered essential services and could proceed in light of COVID-19. So the, many of the whereas's in the beginning of this resolution address the legality of, of this type of work and, and are, are, are key to this resolution. So if there's no questions, I'm, that's.
Can I ask a side question? How are we doing on the Gillette roofs? I know that was supposed to be done in the fall.
Yeah, the Gillette, so the Gillette roofs, thanks, Mike, for asking that, because I want to contrast that with the junior high roof. So the Gillette roofs, they have some trim work to finish up and they are, they are going to be starting that work now. They're going to, they'll be finishing that up while the kids are out of school. The, the challenge with the junior high roof is it's not trim work, they have to do rip-off. They have to rip off sections of the roof. And the contractor came to us and said, listen, I, we're nervous that we'll rip off a section of your roof and then we'll get an order to stop work because of the COVID-19 spreading and we'll put the district and the district's building in a difficult situation. But they felt like, they advised us, and, and, and we respect their advice, to let's hold off until we get to a little more stable place relative to the COVID-19. And so we're going to start on the Gillette road, finishing up the trim, I mean, and we're going to hold off on ripping off any new sections of the junior high until we're in a little more stable place.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, thank you, any further questions? Okay, then you see that we have two resolve there, resolves there, one dealing with the roofing situations, the other dealing with Bear Road. If there are no other questions, this one would have been a roll call vote anyway, so Connie, please.
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Michael Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matt Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, that is carried unanimously. If I could get a motion to put the resolution of the Board of Education for the North Syracuse to do the school districts, BOSI's lease agreement put before us. Motion from, I need a motion from George, seconded from Matt, thank you. Any questions on that?
Could I just make a, could I just make a quick comment on that? We are, we are just so fortunate that North Syracuse over the last several years and has, has made such great investments in technology as we're going through the time we're going through. I feel like we've been able to support students remotely as a result of the, the infrastructure that's in place. This lease allows us to basically buy equipment that's owned by BOSI's, lease it from them for as long as we want and get full BOSI's aid on it. So it's a, it's a critical element in our ability to keep our infrastructure at the highest possible level so that we can support our students and, and staff with their instructional program. And so I think this is a really good financial decision for the district to continue this practice.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Seeing none, okay, Connie, thank, go ahead.
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Michael Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, that again is carried unanimously. Under discussion action items, we have item B, retirement. This is just to recognize there is no action needed on this one. I, I know this surprised someone, I opened this up on Reddit, but we have Phil Cleary, a teacher who, according to this, is retired with 27 years of service. I think we all know Phil. Phil be sitting back over there tonight and he's probably watching right now online. So I just want to thank Phil for his service. I've known Phil for several years, we worked together professionally, we've been good friends and are good friends personally. You know, when I was doing work with the state and county organization, I visited his classroom. Having done daycare with my own grandchildren who are preschool age and seeing what Phil does, it's, it's a special talent to, I don't even know how to say it, to, to go through the routines and herd those children together and keep their attention. So Phil definitely deserves the rest, he will be missed, but I'm sure we're going to see him around a lot. So I want to thank you, Phil, if you're out there. Okay, if we could move on to instructional personnel report, if I get a motion to put that before us. Motion from Terry, seconded from Mary, any discussion on that piece? Seeing none, Connie?
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Michael Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, that's unanimous. And a motion to put the support staff report before us, a motion from George, seconded from Mike. That's before us, any questions? Seeing none?
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Michael Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Matthew Thorne.
Hi.
Mark Thorne, I'm sorry, Mark.
No worries.
Oh, we didn't remember.
Yeah.
So we have an eye from Matt and Mark and they are two different people.
Yeah.
Great.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, we're almost done, so that is carried unanimously. I should only need one more motion, I'm going to make the motion and look for a second. The motion will be to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of four individuals with no action to follow. There's a motion seconded by Mike Marizio, any discussion, seeing none, no, this is Gibson?
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Mike Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, that's unanimous. And a motion, please, to adjourn, motion from Mark and seconded from Mary. I'd assume there's no discussion, okay, all in favor, go ahead, Connie?
Paul Farfalia.
Hi.
Michael Marizio.
Hi.
Robert Crabtree.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Matthew Herman.
Hi.
Terry Kruger.
Hi.
Mary Scanlon.
Hi.
And Mark Thorne.
Hi.
Okay, that is unanimous, our meeting is adjourned. I just have a technical question, I'm assuming we go over to our email and go to our, our.